Okay, it's Monday, June 22nd. Approximately 11:40 a.m. We're going to commence with our town of Sagaville special meeting. Meeting's now open. We're here for a couple of different reasons. One is the first item on the agenda, unless you want to flip these. First item is paving. Second item is waterfront valuation.
I flipped them so that Josh can get to his.
That's excellent suggestion. So we'll go to item three, waterfront valuation. Josh, thank you for coming in. What we're discussing is specifically increasing the valuation on waterfront property and the effect that that will have on revenue and then obviously taxes. And we're doing this today because there's some consideration if we make an adjustment of applying this adjustment to this year's tax cycle. Anything else you guys think over there?
Pretty well sums it up.
What, do you want Josh to start or?
Please.
There's really not much to tell you. I did the same sales ratio and I didn't print and print the copies off.
I have one.
I printed off another one that said with the change of 650 on center pond like the suggestion. You know, looking at bringing it up to 108%. A little high, however.
I can peek off yours.
So that could change dramatically, you know, dramatically quick.
And that's also not levering in the other direction.
Right.
We're bringing waterfront up, but we're not touching non-waterfront.
Right.
And we, in theory, we could do that.
Yeah.
You could, and is about a five to one ratio? If we bring waterfront up, five and brought everything else down, one, we'd stay about the same.
You'd be close, yeah. The trouble is right now, you're, if you just took the sales ratio with just nothing that's on the water and pound, you're actually a little low right now.
Okay, for non- water, okay.
For non-water.
So leaving that alone may correct itself.
Right.
Actually, just to be clear, we're talking about land only.
That's correct.
Not buildings, not things.
Not buildings, not equipment.
It's just the actual property, the land itself. So anybody that's not here, that's.
Yep, that's exactly correct. Because when you get your tax bill, land is broken up separately. And so this would affect that component, actually for everybody, one direction or another.
Right.
I, the, the idea of comparison, of sales comparisons is obviously, I think that's kind of what everybody does.
Right.
But we also, in our previous meeting, we were comparing with other municipalities and bodies of water that are as similar as we could come up with. And that's kind of what spurred this forward because we were obviously low. I mean, if you're going to use that as a comparison.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is your state valuation right now is 102%. So you can't really make a lot of adjustments without making it go a lot higher. We could bring down stuff that's not on the water, but I don't think we should. You know, if anything, I want to bring it up a little bit. I don't want to get too far above that 110% mark either.
How do these things migrate on their own?
Well, it depends on the sales and what happens. When your state guy comes in and he pulls your sale that he wants to use for the sales ratio, if he's nice, he'll pull the ones that look good and put that in the sales ratio. If he wants to take it to you that year, he'll pull the high, all the high ones. You know, so it's kind of.
So they don't do the, cut off the top third, bottom third as you would, they do.
They do, but don't mean they're going to use every sale that happens.
I see.
I mean, if you look at the sales ratio I gave you last time from the state, they had a couple of sales in there that was almost three years old because they could legally go back three years.
Is this what we're referencing right now? This report that you provided us?
That's just the water ones.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
The state ones and then that other packet I give you.
Okay, got it, got it.
So, you know, plus your market. It seems to change every time that the president here, it really does. Seems like after the president's elected and then the, you know, the market seems to go back up. The same with the stock market, if you either watch that, it seems like the presidential year, you know, goes down. You know, people not investing money. I don't know why, but it just seems to happen every four years. I think, I think probably selling right now, if you look at what's selling, it's selling to decent money. I think the next couple, three years, you know, you're going to see the ratio probably go down because your property's selling more. I can't predict that for positive.
So, see, and reaching a ratio of 110 is important because?
The state allows you 10%, either over or under. You know, if you come in at 91, they allow you to go to 100%. You know, if you come in at 110, they let you go to 110, but that's it. I mean, if you go to 120, you're not going to be able to certify at 120. You're only going to be able to certify at 110 and, you know.
What would be required of us at that point?
They would recommend you to do a revaluation. It doesn't mean you have to, there are a lot of towns that just don't. But when you come in to go into county commissioners, people want to fight it. You know, they say, well, you're already valuing it 20% high. You know, commissioners really look at that and they say, hmm. You know, so he's got to complain right from the beginning. He'd have that even too high to that way. But really, you know, how you want to do it. Center pond at 650, probably a little high right now, a couple of years. It's probably going to be a lot closer to where it should be.
Yeah, and it's been a little low for a long time.
Yeah, I'm not really, my opinion is I don't want to make it high, but I don't want to make it low either. I want to make it right. Where, where should it be in this whole? You know, when I would, that sheet that you referenced a while ago, Jody, the one with the different ponds, I was trying to look at that sheet and what pond do you compare our ponds to? So instantly on the list, I mean, I would compare center to Lake of Wetstone. But when I see how that's calculated, that's.
That's totally different.
100%, I mean, you're talking $750 per hundred feet, per hundred. When you're looking at that way.
Dough ponds and Spence Pond, they're all five, them are 500. Them are not quite the pond that Center Pond did.
I was thinking closer to, I mean, on the list, closer to maybe not quite a second Davis, but a second Davis kind of pond, a clean pond.
Davis is 650.
That's what, I mean, that's how I was, and I'm not, and I was thinking about it right either, but that's how I was trying.
It's just fun here. Oh, okay.
I was trying to think of just sales and what we had to use.
Sure.
You know?
Yep.
I thought 550 was good with the sales. However, like I said though, in a couple of years, you're going to have to make another adjustment probably if the sales keep going the way they're going. Because you, you know, if you've done research, ones on the water, they're asking a lot of money for it.
Did you get Garland Pond?
No, I called the Cessna, I'm waiting for them to call me back. Same with Dexter. The Cessna and Garland thought it was at 450 a front foot, but he weren't sure where he had to go back and.
Really?
He's a new guy, he just started last year.
I'd be shocked if Dexter isn't up there.
I'd be surprised if they're not closer to 1,000 front foot at least. You're talking a lot different pond than.
Oh, 100%.
We know Piper, Abbott has kind of an odd formula with Wetstone and Piper, but it's not conceivable there that they're close to 800 if you have a single lot. Davis is 650.
I was surprised that Abbott had the same formula for Wetstone and for Piper. I mean, that's not really, you're not comparing.
Well, again, they don't have the sales to differ in the two when they get it. Because everything's done by the sales and the assessment world. I mean, we can look online all you want, see property for sale, but we're not supposed to assess them that way. They say that's illegal. Because the best thing we'd be do is find out one that's for sale, lower it 10% and that's your assessed value. You know, that would be the easiest way to go, then you'd always be at 100%. But if the state catches you doing that, they'll slap you on the wrist and.
So why did Abbott do theirs the way they did on this?
The Cessna before us just did it that way, that's how she knew how to do it. They haven't had a rebound since we started, so we had to keep that way.
It just seems like a very unique approach. I mean, could we do that?
You could. You could, but you know, they do it everything different. Like two acres of land has got a base price. Whether you've got half an acre or two acres, it's the same value. Which is kind of hard to explain to some taxpayers. You know, 7,500 for undeveloped, that was 15,000, I believe, for developed. Anybody knows you buy two acres of land, put a well inceptic in it, you automatically got more than 15,000 in it right there. So it all depends how you look at it, you know?
Monson Pond, 700, Lake Hebron, 900. I mean, Monson is not shy at all.
No, we just did a rebound, Monson, then we're up a little high, but we had enough sales there to go with it, so. I mean, Hebron was 900 a front foot.
Now, the spreadsheet that you sent us, the one where every single landowner, that was every single landowner in.
Every taxpayer.
Right, taxpayer. Why is, what, how is it different, a rebound, different from what that? I mean, I understand, I mean, but every single person was having a change. Where before, when we discussed it last week, it was, you know, maybe we would do a neighborhood change. What's, how is that difference? What are we talking?
Because your mill rate, your mill rate go down, so the people that didn't have a change at all, their tax bills got to go down.
So you're going to get a, the increase in revenue from the waterfront, we already have the same budget. So we're going to take in more money over there. You, basically, you got two choices. You could take that money and put it in general fund, or you can take that money and lower everybody, even the people you're increasing. They're getting an increase on the waterfront, but they're actually getting a decrease in their mill rate.
When I talked about raising one, lowering the other, so that we wouldn't change our valuation, then your spreadsheet would show no change. They would have an increase, they would have, they would have had a decrease in valuation, but the net to the town would be the same. I'm not proposing that, I just don't want to know how it worked.
Right, 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 right.
So in this case, we all, this, you got this small group.
Right.
That was increased, everybody else stayed the same, so the burden is less for them.
I see, I see, I understand.
Yeah, you really look at that before, like the ones that weren't on the water are closer to 100%. The ones that were off the wall, you know, on the water, I'm sorry, were 89. So your other ones were closer to 100%. So we're just kind of trying to shift it so everybody's more into what they're selling at.
I see, okay.
So even, so like out of that, like I cheated, I formulated, re-sorted that by the difference. So that sheet was 1275 line items, one being the header. So 1,274 taxpayers on there. And out of that, 151 is the number that's seeing increase.
Right. So that's what, that's what we're talking about waterfront.
Yeah, everybody else was a decrease.
And some of those are crossovers, because if you own a piece of property in town, you're going to see a decrease on that. If you, and so there'll be, the actual number of people impacted will probably be less than 150.
And what, what happens is like your mill rate calculation sheet, and I did another one with the 650, we can't use the 17.3 mill rate, because what we did was we upped the value of the town.
84, 70.
We upped it, if we use the 650 on center, we upped it 2, 2,291,100 dollars.
So what did that actually do to the mill rate? We haven't talked about that at all yet. Let's see that number.
With the 650.
All I care about is the number. Which is down to.
We could go to a 16.9 mill rate with a, you know, close to $40,000 overlay.
Which is way more overlay than.
Way, yeah, huge.
I mean, we could come to, that's the lowest you can go, a 16.45 with no overlay and 17.2 with the highest overlay.
And we need an overlay of like 27, 25, 27.
Like a 16.5 mill rate.
Yeah, right, and close to that.
Give me the numbers.
She doesn't want to get voted on something before she knows.
Well, I don't, but I'm just saying, if you're saying the minimum is this, the maximum is that.
Right, no, but we've, we've learned that a few little text changes.
Oh, boy, yeah, I'm really kicking.
You're probably looking at a 16.7, 16.8 mill rate, you could go down to. The trouble I have with that is you gotta remember, this is a COVID year, where they're already talking about not receiving all your revenue sharing funds. And you already put the highest amount in there for your revenue sharing. So if you lose $40,000 right there, it might be 120.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not reducing our take at all. We're not reducing the revenue to the town by a penny.
No, but you're using your estimated revenue sharing.
It's the lowest you can do, there's no overlay in your.
We may not get it, and if we don't, we'll adjust, but what I'm saying is this change.
No, 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 this change don't.
It doesn't, we've already got a budget, we were ready to print these things this week. If we make this adjustment, we're just shifting the burden sharing, that's all.
A lot of towns won't use that full estimated revenue sharing number because they don't. Paul Davis was at a town meeting in Kingsbury that I attended and he, you know, that's the first thing he said, don't count on getting their revenue sharing. Well, if you got it in there as 120,000 and you only get 80, that's what I mean, is the $40,000.
Right, no, we, we talked.
You used to reduce the commitment already, you're not getting.
We knew that that may happen, and there's some talk even on the homestead exemption. Maybe they'll tweak that, you know.
Last time we talked, they weren't going to.
They're not supposed to? What they did with the homestead exemption is this year you're getting 72.5%. I believe it is back. And legally, they only have to give you 50% back. They have to give you that much. So they could be tweaking it a little. I don't, I haven't heard that they are yet, but, but they won't know that until.
I really think, I mean, my own opinion is this is all hidden and everything's still evolving. I really think the greater problem is next year. I mean, next year is weirder.
Yeah, but if you raise it, if you lower it too much and then next year we have problems and it bounces back up, I mean.
We're going next year.
Yeah, we've got a perfectly built-in excuse. If the state, if the state pulls the rug out, yeah, okay, we went back to 17 and a quarter or 17 and a half.
You can go by a 16.8.
Where's Hebron in this formula? Where's Hebron? You're 650% or where's Hebron?
Hebron?
It's on here.
It's $900.
That's, you're moving up to 900?
No, no, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, we did a rebound this last year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I mean hollow.
Hollow, 400.
400s.
So you're 16.75.
So that we raise that from three to four in this formula? Okay.
26.8.
Mainly because that's what apartment is and.
That's right, I remember that, yep.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
So even that, I mean, yeah, they're getting, I mean, the waterfront would see a hit on the land value, but at the same token, that's an increase to equal what we should be doing, but they're also seeing this decrease in the mill rate. So it's not like it's a, just a hit.
Yeah, all the buildings on those pieces of property are going to be adjusted down.
Yeah, I mean, you can almost double, double what the increase is if we kept it at 17.3, I think is what I figured. You know, so somebody that's seeing a $200 increase because we upped the values, if we kept the mill rate at 17.3, they would have seen a $400 increase.
That's why when I, when I talked to Bridy last week, I don't think me and her was on the same thought process because that, my thought was if you can't hit the mill rate, don't hit an increase because it's, it's not, that's not how this works. We're not doing this to slush the general fund.
That's what it will look like if we don't make the adjustment.
100%, if we're going to do this, it needs to be, yeah, I'm sorry, you're getting adjusted to where you should be, but it's to make the town as a whole level and it's better for everyone, even that.
And even if we have to adjust back up next year, it would be totally transparent process and we'll have to adapt.
If that's a COVID issue, that's totally different.
Correct.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that I have, a couple of things, is, you know, one, the uncertainty of this year. That, you know, so I have, you know, and I agree with you and we've talked about that as far as, okay, well, then we just adjusted and we can say we didn't know. Well, the other question is if we don't know what's going on, why are we doing anything, you know?
Well, I would say, what we're doing in terms of adjusting this valuation is the most prudent thing we could do, because we know this, we know for a fact this valuation's lacking and has for a long, long time. So we should, we should at least acknowledge that that revenue's there. Now, what are we going to do with it? That maybe is open for discussion, but to not make this change, I almost feel like I would be the linkman.
Okay, and then, and I understand that, yeah, I mean, that makes sense. And then the only other thing, thought that I have was as far as we also don't know how many people are going, are not going to pay their taxes. Just, just as far as the whole COVID thing and no jobs and, you know, so there's a lot of unknowns going on this year in particular. So, you know, we're adjusting all this, so as far as our income, as far as the town, I'm just.
We're not going to change anything. If we adjust the mill rate, it's exactly the same income that we agreed on.
So it's exactly, so, and so the valuation of the town stays the same as well?
Actually, we're up.
No, valuation of the town goes up, the mill rate goes down.
Okay.
And the net is the same. I mean, approximately.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But back to what you were just saying, Jody. Out of the 1,274 line items, all but 151 are getting reduction.
Right, and I.
You're actually getting some help.
Right, I mean, and I, you know, I mean, I went down and looked through that whole thing and the help end side is like 15 bucks, which, hey.
Yeah, well, it's because there's so many people.
Right, right. But I'm just concerned, my only other concern that we don't know is how many people aren't going to pay their taxes or can't pay their taxes.
Yeah, but this isn't going to make it harder for them, it's going to make it easier.
Okay, okay.
See?
Yeah, no.
For, for the vast majority, it's going to be easier. For 150 people, probably closer to 145 because you got building offset. I mean, probably, it's not, for probably 120, 30 people, it's going to be a little bit harder.
Well, and I didn't go through and look, because what ends up happening is if you look at that report, like if, say I own two properties, the one's under there is under Dale Gray and the other one is under there is Dale Escray, they'll show up in two lines. But if all my properties, you know what I mean, if they're all spelled the same, they're all going to be on there in one spot. So it's kind of hard to look at it to see how many people are actually duplicates.
I had two entries because I have two deeds. I have, the property crosshair was a separate deed, so I had two, so I came in, there was two.
He was on there, okay, so that's what I did.
I was on there twice.
I didn't have enough time to go through it, so I was going to sort it that way.
That number is exaggerated in that sense. Yes, those two tax bills will both be reduced. The one is like $12.
But we got the same thing with the 151. You've got, out of that 151, you've got landowners that have.
Yes.
The waterfront that are going to see an increase, but they also own a piece of non-waterfront that are showing, you know what I mean, in the report somewhere else.
Yeah, we all know people who have multiple pieces of property that are not on the water and they're, they're getting counted every time.
So, but kind of what you're talking about, Jody, the other thing is, well, kind of what you both said. Like Mike said, I mean, we, this is the right thing to do. It gets us both, everybody's on the same page, just making it right. But back to what you were saying, as far as the unknown, that's where the difference is going to be what we decide to set the mill rate at. So Bridy quickly just come up with 16.75.
And that gives us an overlay of 26.85673.
Or we could go to a 16.9.
16.9, yes, which is, oh, what did I do?
Almost 40, 39257.
39257, yes.
I mean, you could really go up to 17.2 if you wanted to.
I know, we really, yeah, under 17. 16.999 would be better than, but that would give more of that buffer.
Well, if we don't change anything, if we don't address any of this before this tax cycle and the mill rate that we set, what's, what is the overlay? The one we agreed to, in other words.
I don't see this thing, I don't want to bet.
The one that we sort of set up, Mike.
Yeah, we did, we made a motion and set the mill rate.
17. 17.3 with the mill rate. And the overlay was 32.690.
So really, I mean, if we can stay close to the 36, stay to that same 32.
And be at 16.9.
Well, it's.
You're whatever that is.
16.75, I think is where we're there.
Yeah, that's to me is.
So at the end of the.
16.9 going to give you 39.
Holy cow, 16.75 to 17.3, that's a big reduction.
16.9 going to give you 39.
Yeah, so if we do, oh, 16.9.
And then the only other question I have, and I, you know, is, I mean, Josh, do you feel that we're thinking through every, you know, I just feel it's slightly rushed, but that's okay, as long as everybody else is, you know, I mean.
It is rushed, it is, it's going to be a quick adjustment. However, something needs to be, should be done, don't need to be done this year. However, to correct it, the best thing to do is, we can adjust it this year to adjust it.
Ideally, we would have done it last year.
Right, right.
With the year before.
Well, I would have, you know, it would have been nice to, to, only because there's so many, so many, you know, if this, then that, you know, and it just varies. And so that's my only, that's my only other hesitation is, you know, are we thinking about all the implications as well as all the benefits and?
I think no matter what you do, you know, next year if the sales drop right off the market, then we're going to be valuing them too high. But I don't foresee that happening. I mean, nobody can predict the future. If you look at the last three years, you know, waterfront's just gone up and up and up.
Really, this is something we should be looking at every, at least every couple of years.
Every couple of years, probably. The main, what the main tax assessment would look like is when he's done, is just the whole state valuation. He isn't going to tell you to adjust it if your state valuation's 102%. He's going to say that you shouldn't touch it. That's going to be his advice. And that's been his advice.
Don't touch it.
Don't touch it. However, you know, if you don't touch it, the people on the water are actually getting a bigger break than the people that are not, because they're selling their property for more than your tax and F1. And that's the, you know, what we're looking at right now.
Right, right. So the numbers that you gave us in last week, what I said, 104.
The waterfront, yeah.
And what, what percentage does that put the waterfront?
That's just waterfront.
Yeah, but, so it was 89% low, it was low 11%, so.
That brings it up closer to 100, I don't know with that, because I didn't figure that out. However, you know, that brings it closer to 100%. This, with the 650 on center, is going to bring you over. But I feel like in a year or two. You're going to have to readjust it again if you don't go that high now.
But you're at 550 right now, center? Is that what your number is that you sent us today?
No, that's 650 today.
The adjustment is 650, okay.
The one before was 550. That brings everything closer to even, closer to what, you know, people off the water and on the water are closer to 100%. The 650 will bring their waterfront over, what people are not on the water are being assessed at. However, like I said, the people on the water are the ones going to see the big hike in a year or two. So you could adjust it now, turn around and adjust it in another two years.
You're going to be chasing waterfront.
You're going to chase it one way or another, right?
And we're still.
That's why I think you really need to look at it every couple of years.
We're still not where our neighbors are. I mean, even if we did 650, we're not where Monson is and Abbott is and Dexter and Willimantic.
I wish you had more sales.
Oh, they're common.
Figure it right down.
Does seem like there's a flurry of activity.
Yeah, I mean, the last, it's been the last three years. You know, 10 years ago waterfront wasn't worth, but it is now. People weren't paying to be on the water. Now it seems like everybody wants to be on the water and willing to pay to do it.
Yeah, I know, I was looking at a, I did some research because, over the weekend, because there is a camp that's on Manahan, it's been for sale for a while. It's been, it's reduced, it's down to 80 at the moment. But I went back through, they bought it in like the end of the 90s for 21,000. So, I mean, selling it at 80 right now is, it's not really, you know, it's a camp, so it's not like it's, but still, you know, when you look, that's not that long of a timeframe to see how much difference this stuff has changed.
I think the Arnold's has got theirs up for sale, I believe.
180 for two.
And they really don't have to write away there.
They don't. It's 180.
I was talking to them, the water is there right away.
Yeah.
They have own access to it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But I think what happened there, and I don't know this to be a fact, but that was actually, because I researched that one. So they actually purchased that as tax-acquired property with a, with a quick claim deed. So I bet before that did have.
No, I checked for them.
Even before that, it didn't?
I think they could probably get one from, I think Andy owns the land.
Yeah, he does, Andy was all around. He's not interested.
He's not interested.
Fight a compelling.
But there is a plow truck sitting right there beside the camp, so they drove that there somehow.
That somehow, yeah. You used to be able to drive there, one, back in the day I had my boot, but now I don't think you can.
I didn't go back really far, but the previous one didn't.
I just, and I may be oversimplifying this, but I think what's required is two steps. We're going to have to decide the amount that Josh is going to adjust. And then based on that adjustment, if we elect to make any, we're going to have to arrive at a new mill rate, should we decide to change it as a result of this adjustment. So that's gonna be two separate questions, uh, so we really need two separate motions to get to a, a discussion and a vote on those two items. Does that seem kind of where we're at?
No, don't we actually have to, I mean, we kinda gotta split each pond, are you gonna just go?
Well, yeah, we, I get, I, you could, for example, right now, his proposal was six fifty and four, if one of us makes a motion to it, to go to six fifty and four. And there's a second, then we have a discussion, and then you have a vote, you could make it six fifty and three, or whatever you wanna do.
Yes, that's what I wanna do, is get us to a point where we.
Well, we know what five fifty on center is and four on Harlow is, and we know what six fifty on center is and four on Harlow is, so if you pick something else.
We're gonna have to recalculate everything.
Well, let's just make a mo, let's, all right, I'll make a motion to go with the assessors' evaluation of six fifty for center and four hundred for Manhattan.
I'll second that.
All right.
Now we can discuss it.
And that's developed.
Yes, developed, sorry.
Where does undeveloped fall in that scenario?
Uh, and how does that actually work, just cause I have no idea?
Yeah, I was, I, I, see, that's why I, I feel like I just don't know enough about any of this.
Harlow is, Harlow is three.
Right, but how do you, right, how do you figure out what's developed and what's not developed?
If it has a building and people are staying on, then it's called a development.
Right, but how much of it is developed?
The whole lot.
The whole lot?
Yeah. Unless they wanna break that parcel up.
So it goes by deed again, it's like the Parkman thing in the two-nine-nine-nine.
If you wanna break that deed up, so you have two separate lots, and then I can charge the second lot at the three hundred, the developed lot at the four hundred on the Harlow lot. Uh, as far as coming up with a undeveloped front foot price, there's really no formula, you know, we're kinda trying to plug in numbers in there to see some land sales. We don't have many land sales, so I kind of, it's kind of a, I don't wanna charge them the same as developed, cause I have sales for developed.
Right.
So I kinda bring it down and try to compare it to other towns and, you know, try to come up with some price that seems pretty fair. If I had more sale, then we can pinpoint it right down to a deed, but.
And then there are other variables like access, we talked about, so if you have undeveloped, no access, then it keeps going down.
Right, I'm looking at like one fifty, like I was saying, for boat access properties, the front foot. There's a lot of people out there that have waterfrontage, if they had a, like a soil scientist or, or somebody look at that property and say, well, half of that frontage is unbuildable. And then we could reduce that half, because they have proof that it's unbuildable by fifty percent is what we usually do. So you may have like a thousand front feet, but you could only really build on five hundred of it, it would probably benefit them to.
But that's true, that was true yesterday.
Yeah, but yeah, that's true even not on the water, you know, if you have a regular piece of land and you have somebody like a soil scientist say, this land is unbuildable, then I'll reduce it by fifty percent. They're not just, you know, it's not just waterfront, it's.
And you do things like tree growth and open space and.
Right, then there's other programs.
But you're basically, you're doing that all on a discretion of, kinda based off on what the regular development number is.
Yeah.
Right, it's not like it's.
What a lot of people will do is if they, you know, if they have a lot of acres and it's on a waterfront, they'll put it in tree growth, they don't plan on building on it. That, that's a big decrease for the town, because then you, instead of the front foot price, you're getting per acre price, that's like a hundred and fifty dollars an acre, you know?
Tree growth does that even on waterfront?
Yep.
Yeah, don't you?
They, they thought about that.
Politician that owned coastal property.
They have a group, a lot of them.
Very controversial.
Piece of property that was valued at one point two million dollars.
So that's how a lot of these big logging companies own the thousands of acres around all of these ponds, so they're not paying, they're not paying much on any of that.
You don't really care. Correct, it's locked in.
Incumbent.
Yes.
But on the other hand, they're making it so they can't develop it without paying a pound.
Oh, a hundred percent, but I'm just, you know, you take some of these guys, you know, they may own a hundred thousand acres up north and got mile after mile of waterfront, but they don't, that's all just tree growth.
I mean, Linkletter is the same way, they own twelve thousand acres in Kingsbury, half of it's around Fox Pond, they don't get a charge of front foot value, because it's all tree growth.
Right.
Yeah, that's just.
All right, Bridie, sixteen-seven-five was waterfront overlay?
Uh, sixteen-seven-five, yeah, was at twenty-six, eight, fifty-six.
All right, so twenty-seven thousand, let me know that that's.
And then I just did sixteen-eight-four is at thirty-four, two ninety-seven, it's closer to the seventeen-three that we had. So that's probably your range you're looking at.
I mean, for me, Manhattan is easier, cause you already got Parkman, it was evaluated not that long ago, they already set that at four, it's the same, so. The piece on the center between the five fifty or six fifty, that's the, really, the conversation or?
Right, really, I, you know, six fifty is not out of the realm for sure, five fifty hits most more of the sales that we get to use, but.
So it's six hundred more.
After a couple of years, I think.
But it's six hundred more of a today's number?
I didn't figure it out at six hundred.
No, I'm just, but I mean, if you're, you know what I mean, you're thinking that five fifty, we're really maybe still a little behind, six fifty, we're kinda, might be another year or so, are we?
I think at six hundred, you're still gonna be an adjusted unit in a couple of years.
Yeah, we're still behind Monson Pond and.
Okay, no, it's a question, that's why I'm, just so we all kinda can feel this out.
Right, I think six fifty might take you a little high this year, but I don't think that for a year or two, it's not going to be, so you're not adjusting the waterfront every year, that's it. That's one thing, I just, it didn't have to do with adjusting every year, cause then you're playing with evaluations and getting people calling and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't been adjusted in a long, long time.
Right.
And I, hopefully, we're not doing it again for a long time, but.
So I mean, really, you've given us two different numbers, what's your strongest opinion of where we need to go? No, I'm not gonna say Josh told me, I'm just, I mean, I'm using you as a guide, you look at all of this.
I, I would like to see it go to six fifty, even though you might be a little high in the state valuation. But as far as if you're a number guy, five fifty, five fifty works better.
Do you think the six fifty is gonna put us over one-ten?
No, it'd be really close.
Okay.
I would like to say what it's gonna be, but until that state guy comes in here and pulls the sale that he wants to use.
Right.
You know, exactly, I, you haven't got enough sales on the water to bother the evaluation that bad.
Cause your recommendation, that's good enough for me.
Why doesn't he have to use all of them? If you have so few of them, why doesn't he have to use all of them? No, it's, it's.
If he used every sale that he could use in the town evaluation, it'd probably be.
Comment.
Yeah, it'll be eighty-five.
Gotcha.
They don't do that in any town, they try to, they, they know, cause they, they do every town, they know that people are selling property, sometimes it's a quick sale, sometimes it's been on the market for a year.
Just to get.
They kinda use their own judgment, try to pull out the one, they try to use what happened in the last six months. You know, if you have a place sold in a six-month period, it's a good sale, if you have a place sold in two weeks, it was probably too low.
Or twelve hours.
Or twelve hours.
That went too low.
You know, but.
But I mean, we have two, we have two houses in town, and the house sale below thirty thousand dollars. Now, they're quick sales, they're repos, they're, you know what I mean, they're not, there's not a lot there, but.
Did you look, see what we had that one assessed for, just to kinda compare it?
What's that?
Did you look, see what that one you think about buying was assessed for?
Yes, paying more.
Is it close to?
You're over it.
I'm over it.
You are?
Yeah, it's at eighty-nine.
At eighty-nine?
Yeah, I'm doing a hundred.
Well, this six fifty, I wonder how close it's gonna be, but you know, that's just.
How much front?
I think it's a hundred.
It's a hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be close.
It'll be close.
Well, that's another way to look at it, I guess, you know?
Put your money where your mouth is.
A hundred percent, I mean, I'm there, it's, it's not about, well, and I mean, that's the one thing that I definitely. And I'm not getting into what other boards have done in the past, but there's never been hidden agendas, I mean, we always try to do what's the best for the whole, the majority, whatever, and.
That's hard for everybody in the town to see that.
Correct, but this is definitely what it is.
All you can do, try, you know? So, so, you know, really, you should be saying, hey, it should be two hundred dollars.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that'd be nice, but then again, what's the difference, I mean, you say that, now the mill rate's up to twenty and we're all paying it anyway, so.
Right, right.
To me, it's just a matter of making it right.
So you know, that's a, that's a recent sale, if you wanna go that way, and that's pretty close, that hits pretty close, so.
Yeah, no, I think.
The one that, the one that really jumps out at me is like the one that Barry Craig sold down here on Manhattan Pond, really come off twenty-three, sold that for like a hundred and. Thirty-five thousand, I think it was, I'd have to bring the waterfront up to eight hundred dollars to hit that one sale, see, that's why they don't look at this one sale.
Sure. But the, the trend is certainly there, yeah.
It's gone off prickling, or they go one on the other?
The A-frame.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
But it just, he got a lot of money out of it, then he sold one down the Thomas Road, and at four hundred, we're pretty much dead on to that sale, so. You know, you see such a big increase there, eight hundred to four hundred.
And that's the way it is, I mean.
Hard to hit the sale, it'll be perfect on every sale.
Any further discussion on six fifty-four?
Um, just, just another question, that spreadsheet, sorry.
No.
That spreadsheet was running the number at.
Did you send them the one I sent you this morning?
Just sent, you sent it to me, I sent it.
I sent one this morning with the six fifty adjustment, so the other one you have was over five fifty.
So that is the one that I referenced, where the hundred and fifty-one are the only ones that saw an increase.
It'd be the same amount of sales, but.
I have it here.
It's okay, oh, you have it printed, it, for all of us or no?
No, I just.
Oh, okay.
Actually, the number of impact, it won't change.
The number of impact won't change.
Right, it's just the magnitude of the impact, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, at six fifty, the, the increase is gonna be a little bit lower for the people on center pond, not on.
So does that group then then move it to middle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so those very same people, with a hundred and fifty that are impacted on their land, are actually going to also be impacted positively.
Sure.
On their buildings and everything else.
I guess I didn't appreciate that, you know, I mean, I, I didn't.
All of that gives and takes, and we still end up with two point one million dollars in additional valuation that we can use to enhance our revenue.
Another thing, think about two, that's gonna hurt your annual school budget and everything else, is something about the valuation of the town, you know?
Yeah.
Don't.
But it won't hit us this year, it'll hit us.
It'll hit you this year.
But it's real, yeah, that's real, I mean.
I mean, the problem.
And it's, and it's equitable.
Yeah, I mean, that's why hit Parkman so hard, they had fourteen million dollars brought in from the substation, now there's school budget, how much you do about it?
No, it's only the same deal, it's a real number, well, no, we won't like it or we love it.
No, I, all these enhancements to Monson are probably affecting Monson too.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's why we had.
I mean, it looks like downtown Freeport.
I'm sure they are.
That's why we had to do a rebuild.
I'm sure, yeah.
I mean, then mill rate's gonna go from twenty-nine to seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, so it does work.
Yeah, they see a bigger property value in the tax bill, but yet, the mill rate went down, so the tax bill itself didn't actually change a whole lot.
Not too bad.
No, that's, you know, some of these towns talk about revelling going down, it's like, oh, great, yeah, now your mill rate's thirty-one, it's like, it's not really.
That's kind of the catch twenty-two about a rebuild, I mean, that can go.
Either way.
Either way.
That's why Parkman doesn't want to do a rebuild, you know, their mill rate's at fourteen-two-five, if they did a rebuild, the properties would have to go down, the mill rate would go up in the end, so they're really paying for no difference.
Sure, sure.
So just, what would that cost, let's just say, and no, I'm not thinking about this, I'm just curious.
Revaluation?
Yep, what would that cost?
Last one was fifty-three thousand dollars.
And that was one though.
Two thousand and six, I believe it was.
Still not, it's, I mean, you could pay for that if you found enough properties.
In theory.
I mean, the recommendation is a rebuild last ten years, I mean, you've.
Every, every ten years?
You've exceeded that.
When was, when was last?
Two oh six.
Yeah, we've been able to keep the, we've been able to keep the, and they look, like I said, all the state looks at is that total number, they're at a hundred and two percent, so they're not gonna tell you.
They're just gonna leave you alone.
But they end up, they answer, you guys doing good.
Right, right.
And that's ultimately what, where the goal is.
Right, just stay under the radar.
Well, and you kinda have a feel, if you're from up here, we all know that, you know, properties were worth more in nineteen ninety-five in many cases than they are today. And we've gotten, we've come back a little, I think, but it hasn't really gone crazy.
No.
If you own a piece of property. There's nobody else in the country that bought a piece of property in the late nineties for twenty grand and sell it for eighty today. No, it's, no.
Yeah.
And it's not just us, it's, you know, but waterfront, that's the exception, it has worked.
It is, I think you'll see regular land go before too much longer, cause they're not making more of it, you know, so people are gonna invest in it. You know, it's not a bad investment.
There's a greater interest from people in our community right now, I mean.
I think this, it's conceivable this pandemic too is having a positive effect on rural areas like ours.
Definitely.
It's just, people are thinking, I need a, I need a plan B.
Yeah.
The hospital is seeing physicians who are saying, I'm out of Boston, I'm out of.
All of a sudden, they have an interest man.
Right, and no longer we're having to recruit.
Go over, please hire me.
Just that changed, I don't wanna get on the subway ever again.
Yeah, right, exactly, I gotta get my kids out of here, so.
And there's so many people now that can work from home.
Exactly, yeah, that's true.
All you need is internet.
That's right.
Since it's the pandemic, you know, like my parents live on Kingsbury Pond, you'd never see many lights on at night until after July fourth. Well, this last month, it seemed like the whole pond had been lit up, and mostly out of the data that have come up.
Yeah.
Early, just to get away.
Yeah.
And I think you're gonna see that, people have been invested, because they see.
Yeah, and it should really, you know, whether you got a humble little place that you can ATV out of, if you live in Connecticut, that's a safe haven for you.
That's right, that's right, but you need the internet, you need.
You do, that, you know, that's funny, that we, of all the things that we could invest in the bandwidth, I would, I wish.
Yeah.
That's where we're headed, but anyway.
All right, um, anything else? Um, is regarding six fifty and four, there's been a motion, we've discussed it, I make a motion that we vote.
Second.
Okay, I'll vote in favor of it.
I'm in.
We're all three in favor of six fifty and four on the valuation. The next question is, the mill rate, Bridie said eighty-four, six point eight four, leaves us with virtually the same overlay as we had this morning. Before we made these changes, sixteen point eight four.
Gives you thirty.
Thirty-four, two ninety-seven, and thirty cents.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
So that's a decrease, so, so we were at before, I just want, we lowered the mill rate by, what's that number, we was at seventeen-three? We're seventeen-three something.
So.
Seventeen-three.
By.
So that adjustment will, that will come down to sixteen point eight four, the, the net budget is essentially the same as what we passed at town meeting, um.
Well, the budget is the same, the revenue coming in is essentially the same.
Correct, yep.
Make sure nobody's changing that.
In other words, we haven't added to the general with this.
Right.
Okay, uh, let's take a vote, I vote for the sixteen-eight-four.
Second?
Two votes, three, but we're all in favor, Josh, thank you very much for doing this on short notice.
Fuck, should go, Jerry.
No, we've, we've got one more, one more item. Uh, yeah.
Well, there, thank you, no, that's five fifty, I want to. That's all, thank you.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
It's really a big help, appreciate it.
I'll talk to you later in the week, just when we might be able to.
Hopefully, won't be too long, but we'll see, I'll work on it this weekend, get it done, so we'll have it by next week, hopefully.
Okay, good.
Anybody wanna guess when's the last time we saw that mill rate at sixteen?
Actually, it wasn't as long ago as you think.
No?
No, about, probably ten.
Ten years?
We, we went from thirteen and just rocketed.
Oh, I understand that, but to say that we just step back ten years in time.
Remember when we were on the budget committee, it was amazing.
And the.
That's substantial.
Yeah, it is, it's substantial. The school was out of control too, but this was, was pacing it.
Yeah, it was, it was.
We can't do that.
We were like parabolic.
Is there an easy way to find that out?
I've got it at home.
Sure, I'll look it up.
I've got it at home. From, from our budget committee days.
As a group, I just think that's.
Yeah, no, we can redo it.
It's posted in all of, yeah, the, if you have it, I won't bother, but it's posted in all the town reports.
Yep.
Close, so I could.
No, though, I, I can't, I forget the date, but I think it was around ten, eleven, twelve, where we just, it was going up ten, twelve percent every year, sometimes twenty.
Whoa.
We'd go from, well, you'd go from eleven mil to fourteen mil to sixteen mil, I mean.
It's good.
I said, if you just say at this pace, you're going to be, and no one will ever sell a house. But we've kind of fixed that, so.
Yeah.
And with some people selling houses, so. Uh, the second item, we have a paving contract to consider?
I only have two copies here, but you guys can share. I finally got it this morning, I had to call and.
From Roundy's?
From Roundy's, so here, you look at this one. They hadn't put the gravel on.
Yeah, you told me that they.
But she put a better rate on than, they quoted me first time, so.
Okay, let's go with that.
Um, the thing I wanted to ask you is, we had McFeeters. We had a twenty-foot, um, road and it came out to twenty-one and a half in as small as places, do we want to factor that in?
We know that they're, they do a twenty-two foot road. That's what they do.
Right.
And then, and now they're doing the reclaiming and everything, so.
Yeah, and we got a lot of, there's no reason why we had an issue up there, because we didn't have much time with.
Right.
It was more of a shoulder issue than a cost issue. We didn't pay ten percent more.
No, because they quoted us on what they thought.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, we got, but.
At the end of the day, it was more of an awareness for everybody.
Right, right.
Yeah, he didn't actually realize that he was paid at twenty-two feet.
Okay.
The, that, that work, up to that roughly twelve thousand dollar worth of work, is, when does that start?
Supposed to start today.
Okay.
I've talked to Lisa this morning, the equipment will arrive today, they're hoping to start tomorrow.
Oh, good.
That's all.
Oh, good, 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 so.
We'll take it.
Cause I went this morning to check and it's like, still nothing.
So this is, just so everybody knows, this is how much paving?
Two miles.
Two miles? Uh, and this isn't the finish coat?
No, this isn't.
Reclaim and?
Binder.
Binder for two miles. And if things go well, we may try to finish this this year, if not, we'll put it in next year's budget.
And I, uh, went and took a couple of grade stakes and marked from the entrance of East Angerville Road at Downey Hill, two miles in, which puts you at the past Spencer's, um, at the end of Cleaves Field, it's just before the road to the pits, the brown pit.
Oh, it's just before that?
It's just before that. There is a culvert right after that, but over trace, I don't know.
That's where it gets crappy right after that, right?
Yeah. What's your total rate there?
It is, uh, two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars fifty-seven cents.
How much is left of East Angerville?
That does.
I mean, very much left there, hot dog.
How much hot dog is left?
That's half.
Distance wise.
Distance?
There's no distance.
One, one point seven five.
There is that much further.
That much more.
Yeah, no, it's about a four mile road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, we're doing half this year and half next year.
I got to get somebody out there to. Start the ditching and the, I mean, we haven't got a.
We're not totally ready yet.
We're not totally.
No, and I, I know we've always mentioned two miles, but I didn't know exactly where the two miles was. I was really hoping the two miles was going to get, go right on the edge of the bad spot.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It really gets bad right, just right after that.
You're at the foot of that hill.
Yep, that hill is that, as you're going up over it, but it's halfway, I mean, it is what it is.
Bad locked. Well, it'll be half done.
Well, there's two options, you go that way, you can go the other way.
That's right.
That sounds not prepped.
He's not all prepped.
So we can't go that way.
Nope.
It sucks. That's fine, we'll just finish it next year.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, would you?
Yeah, sure, um, I'll make a motion to accept this bid from Roundy's for two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six fifty-seven cents.
Second? Any further discussion? We vote? All three are in favor of this Roundy's contract.
Okay, guys, I didn't put it on the agenda because I was whipping through stuff, saying it's.
Oh, yeah.
I've managed to talk to Herricks, to Newt's and to Lawson. I have not managed to get ahold of Garrish.
Okay.
And that's, this is from Herricks, if you look at it, I like the.
They're all half inch minus.
Yes.
So the stonage, well, it is more stonage.
Is that a problem? Is the stone?
You're gonna, well, you screen half inch minus, this can come through anybody's screen.
Okay, yeah.
It's just a matter of one pit, you might get more of this than you would in another. But you could get that from any.
Sure, right, because it's, that's what it is.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
I mean, you're screening to that size.
Right, so I texted Lawson, he said, yes, it's fifteen seventy-five a yard and eight fifty to mix. Really, really hoping Chris will do his own mixing, um. What's it say? I think I need my glasses. He's really hoping that Chris will do his own mixing.
Keep going.
I talked.
Oh, you want us, yeah, maybe you got it? Yeah, he's there. He, I think he was kind of waiting, he didn't know where to go.
Okay, so I talked to Chris, he's willing to mix and put it up for a dollar fifty a yard.
Go with that.
So, I also talked to Zach, he brought in that he's willing to put it up for two dollars a yard.
I'll stay with a dollar fifty.
Yeah.
So far, I'm not being stressed.
So that's thirteen ninety-five plus two dollars, fifteen ninety-five. If Chris puts it up, it's fifteen seventy-five plus a dollar fifty.
Yeah.
It's.
Yep.
And I haven't, I just didn't get a chance to reach out to Garrish, I'm sorry.
I mean, as far, to me, as far as that sample right there, I mean, you obviously don't want a high percentage of that latch material in it.
Right, right.
But I don't know how to answer that. You know, if that's just a random out of his pile and that's the ratio you're going to get, I'm a little in.
Well, if, I, I would say if you're not going to take that sample as a fair representation, there's no point in asking for a sample.
That's true.
You look at it, you tell me what your thoughts.
Well, I already know I would not take the one with the stone. If, now, that doesn't mean that your other sample might not be.
But that's what I'm saying, is your bid says you will take that stone.
Right.
That's right.
The size of the string.
But the previous one that you brought, that we looked at.
I didn't see any stone in it.
I didn't either.
None, you mean these over here.
So that tells me that that pit really, that this pit may have a higher volume.
That's a reasonable conclusion to draw.
Right, whereas the other ones didn't have any.
Right.
You may see that same thing in some of the other one, but when you're looking at back before.
Based on the data or information you have now, there's.
It doesn't matter.
I didn't notice hardly, there's some in there, but it's minimal.
They look different, yep.
The.
That seems.
Anything?
Only thing I want to add is.
That is definitely grittier too, though.
Yeah, almost better, yeah, it's like coffee, yeah.
I, I really like, if that was a little less stone, that is better sand.
Is it?
See, I, I feel like that.
This is drier, it's less silty.
Well, it's definitely, yeah, that's interesting.
But that's what you want, is you don't want.
This is too.
That's still clumpy. Even you can look at it right there, it's.
Yeah, oops, sorry, sorry, sorry.
The other thing I wanted to add is, um, scheduling.
It is, it's got fair amount of stone.
Scheduling with two contractors considering one gets hairy.
With who, as far as what?
Lawson and Newt versus just.
Oh, I see. You let them take care of that. We've done that before.
Those two communicate.
Yeah, you, you don't even.
I mean, we can't make it part of the contract that they communicate, though, that's, that's where it could be a problem for Bridie.
Well, you know, or.
But you've talked to both people.
I've talked to both people.
And they've said they will, they know what's involved. Chris knows he needs to coordinate with Steve for it to work.
And Lawson keeps saying to me, just as long as somebody has trucks and.
Right, they gotta be ready to go.
Ready to go when I am, because I'm not, I'm not.
Say that again?
He wa, he wants to make sure that we have somebody there to put up the sand, mix it with the salt.
The day he says, um.
When he says to do it.
Right, he doesn't want to do it for a few hours and then nobody shows up and.
And he will, um, deal with doing with salt for me and, and, and he will make sure the salt trucks arrive when they're supposed to and, um, and that's way easier for me because when one person's saying, call these guys and tell them this, and then.